Before we open the meeting, Adam, would you lead us in a prayer?
Yes. Please join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, I praise you because you are interested in our affairs, our comings and our goings, our social lives, our concerns, our business and businesses, and our city and other community organizations. I realize we really have no business asking you to hear our prayers except for the fact that you've stated that you want us to pray to you and you've not left us alone in some cosmic machine. You're involved and want us to know it. So I thank you that you are. I know that your ways aren't often, are ways, but I humbly ask, knowing that you care, that you influence this meeting, this community, this city, and its officials and their decision-making for the better, that you improve the lives of all those who might be touched by the things addressed in this evening's meeting. God, please keep us from our vices and deliver us from evil. Help us to focus on humility and peace and kindness and goodness and self-controls that we may flourish in this universe you've created, even if it is a universe fallen by an original sin and by more recent sins that we have done and those done by the people around us. May we humble ourselves to your ways so that Rolla and its leadership and its citizens and its guests be blessed by you in ways that we can easily recognize, please. And I pray this in the highest name of Jesus who is the Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I'd like to officially open the meeting, starting with a pledge. Councilperson Persebarren, would you lead us?
I'd like to lead this. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Short agenda tonight, folks. First section is a consent agenda.
The jinx.
Don't say that.
Jinx.
Thanks, Luke.
I have a theory on why that is. I probably shouldn't say it. Starting with the consent agenda, consider approval of the city council meetings from May 5th, 19th, which had a regular meeting and closed session. Are there any questions regarding amendments?
Making a motion with that?
Second.
Make your motion in second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Reports of mayor and council reports of boards and commissions, A through I, are there any questions on any of those minutes?
This may be best for John maybe. I was looking at the, so some of the center numbers is 2F5. It's where they give actual members versus budgeted members. A budgeted member, is that what the desired expectation, projection was at that given time, like what they would have hoped to be?
Yes.
Okay.
And they leave that out on month by month in the, that was in the budget that was approved in September.
So it's a projection of how many members they would have hoped to have at the time? So like this month, you would see a 373-member shortfall would be the way to look at that properly?
Yep.
Okay. One clarification, thank you.
Yeah, and that number is based on the first day of the month or the last day of the month? Probably the last day.
Oh, I think the last.
Last day.
Yeah.
Public hearings, we have none scheduled. Acknowledgements or special presentations, there are none scheduled. Old business, there's three items. The first is an ordinance to enter an agreement with Donald Magi Inc. for concrete.
So a few meetings ago, council ordered the bid to Donald Magi Incorporated for some concrete work on Green Tree Road and Center Drive near I-44. Again, Donald Magi was the lowest responsible bidder at $139,050. So staff is requesting the final reading of the ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter the contract with Donald Magi. Any questions?
Any questions for Darren? If not, final reading, please.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a certain agreement between the City of Rolla, Missouri and Donald Magi, Inc.
Jackson will make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion?
The only thing I would want to mention, because it'd be very unusual to vote no, but I was interested in pursuing a conversation with the irregular bid. So more for explanation of why I'll vote no, is I was interested in the other bidder who was not considered for this bid.
Well, you don't have to, you don't have to vote no necessarily. If that, this is a discussion phase. So if you want an answer to that question, we'll get you the answer.
Well, I remember we had discussed that and the motion was made to approve this and it went forward at that point. So.
Did you get your answer, though?
Well, I was part of the discussion. Like, I remember the discussion. I thought it was worth considering because he was a lower bidder. Nathan with legal actually said, he goes, I have no hesitation. I think it was about the bond and how that, how that functioned. I understand why council may not be comfortable. I just would have been interested in pursuing that consideration.
So you're not looking, you're not asking a question, looking for an answer. You're basically sort of giving the reason why you're going to vote no.
Yes.
I got it.
Correct.
Roll call vote, please.
McNevan?
Yes.
Dickens?
Yes.
Roloff's?
Yes.
Shelby?
No.
Grevin?
Yes.
Barrent?
Yes.
Bulch?
Yes.
Pace?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Han?
Yes.
Turbin?
No.
Nine eyes.
Ordinance approved. The next item is an ordinance to approve a CUP, conditional use permit for a church in an R1. Tom?
All right. All right. Yes, this is, this is the second reading, so we've talked about this a little bit in the last meeting, and so I will go a little bit fast just to kind of remind you which property we're talking about and see if you had any questions since the last meeting. Okay. Just a minute now. Hold on. There we go. All right, so this, this property is located at the corner of Forum. Geez, all right. Forum Drive and 18th Street, southeast corner. This is a portion of the property, it's that large piece of property kind of in the area everybody's probably familiar with. This is a street view looking kind of toward the east from the roundabout. Basically, it's this area kind of to the southeast of the roundabout that's proposed for this, this church. So the site plan kind of showing the church, says about a 10,000 square foot building and the associated parking. The, the driveways are coming off of what would be 18th Street. The 18th Street will be built in order for this, this development to, to occur. The developer, the owner of the property intends to build 18th Street all the way from, from Forum Drive all the way to McCutcheon as a part of all that. Yeah. The building elevation should point out that this is fairly preliminary. They've kind of got me what they've, what they've been working on so far, but just to give you an idea, basically it's a kind of a one-story type building that they've got kind of planned. So just to review, this does appear to be consistent with the comprehensive plan and that this is residential property and churches are, you know, oh, let me take this back. When you're reviewing, if you can issue a permit, you should look for, for some things. You should look, make sure that it is consistent with the comprehensive plan. You should also make sure that the use, the scale and the location are compatible with the area. There's adequate utilities and facilities in the area. That there's a, you can impose reasonable conditions to mitigate any impacts that you find this, this project would cause. You look at the impact of traffic and any other relevant information you receive at the public hearing. Just to summarize, a conditional use permit is required for a church in this case because it's on a property that's greater than one acre in the R1 district. The zoning code used to allow churches just as a by right use in all the residential districts, but we did, when we amended the zoning code, we did add this thing in here for lots greater than one acre. That was mostly kind of targeting, the bigger the church is, the more potential it is that that church would have some negative impacts on the area because, because it's all zoned R1. They had to rezone before they could just go into any property of any size and build any, any type of church. So this is to, to catch any mitigation that if somebody was coming in with like, say, a mega church, something like that, we could, you know, mitigate that. A conditional use permit should only be approved if you find that the scale and intensity is compatible with the area, and churches are pretty commonly located in residential areas. Planning and zoning commission did recommend approval with some conditions. Those conditions are reflected in the ordinance. The conditions, basically at the initial construction, be limited to 10,000 square feet in area. That's what you see on the site plan. That significant expansions will require approval of amendment to the conditional use permit. That basically goes through the same process we did today for a significant expansion. They'll have to submit a landscape plan, so we're sure exactly what they're planning on for landscaping and primarily worried about what's going on between them and the neighbors to the south, but there's also landscaping that could be done throughout the property. The planning and zoning commission imposed a condition that a seven-foot privacy fence be required along the development to the south, along the developed area at least. That's for, just to ensure that there's proper screening between them and the properties to the south. There was some discussion about if landscaping could be done and achieve that, but they just wanted to be safe and require a privacy fence. Do you have any questions for me, then?
Questions for Tom?
I have a quick question.
Yeah.
The, the landscape plan. All right, so I understand that's in part to mitigate impact to the surrounding neighborhoods, in part, and also to maintain as close as possible current flow of water across the property, right? So I guess, so the wording here is a little, the landscape plan must be submitted for administrative review prior to issuing the building permit. So is it only that administration reviews it and off it goes? Or is it that an administration has to approve?
Well, reviewing it for compliance with the code, with the zoning codes, that's not really up to me to decide if I like it or not. I'm just reviewing it to make sure that it meets the codes.
Okay, so would you be approving that it does meet the code or not approve it? Or saying, or telling them, all right, you have to go back and do something else?
Yes, I'd work with them until we have a landscape plan that I can approve. The, the part about it being reviewed administratively is just to clarify that we don't bring it back to the city council and letting a zoning commission.
Okay, so should it be administrative approval, then, to administrative review? Because I've reviewed this, I haven't approved anything. To me, they're different things. Reviewing is just looking at something. Approval is saying, you know, all right, Tom, hereby I say that this is good to go.
Sure.
Okay.
So.
So would we need to?
So I don't know that I got an answer. Because there is a fine line between, so you're reviewing for compatibility with code.
Sure.
And if it matches code, you say to them, you're good with code. You're good to go. You, you can't review it without approving, the way I see it.
Yes, yeah. You have to review and then approve.
It makes sense.
You can review without ever approving or not approving.
Sure.
So what are you doing?
You want to change that word?
Correct. All right. So I move that in the, in the planning and zoning commission recommendations, item three, be changed to read, submitted for.
In the ordinance.
Section two, item three, be changed to state, a landscape plan must be submitted for administrative approval prior to issuing the building permit.
That works. We can live with that.
Yeah.
I'll second. Boy, I was not very.
Well, I went second and asked Nathan for legal if he would agree with that.
I do.
Okay.
I do. It's always better to make things more direct.
Sure.
It's a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the amendment? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any other questions before we read the amended ordinance?
You mentioned just when you were reading through that he, that he intends to build that street through rather than must build that street through? Is that an option, that he doesn't have to?
I mean, no, it's, there's got to be a street there in order to access the property.
Okay.
The, the question is, does it need to go all the way through as the way the current ordinance is for the subdivision of that plat that was done? It says it must go all the way through as, as that ordinance is written.
It has to be, it has to be built before the certificate of occupancy, right?
Well, yeah, that's another nuance to it.
Is that what your question is?
Yeah, well, he just said that they intend to build it through. Like, if they just choose not to, is that okay?
No.
So they must build it if they want to occupy in, in the development, basically. But that's, I just want to clarify that.
Yeah, and that's already a clause in a prior subdivision plat?
Yeah.
We could, likely could add that as an additional condition if it was necessary, but there is a plat that's recorded that's got that same language in it already.
I'm fine not doubling up, as long as it's valid. And it would be the church's responsibility to maintain that fence. I'm more double checking that. I can't imagine it wouldn't be, with the seven-foot privacy fence, that would be the church's or, well, I'd say the church's responsibility to maintain that fence as well?
Yeah, I would say so, especially since it's a condition on the conditional use permit.
Okay.
It's, it's very clear that there's got to be a fence there as far as that goes. If it, well, and it's also required if it was required in the zoning code, but having it as a condition makes it extra sure. If it was just on the site plan and they said, we're going to do it and this and that, so I think we can be extra sure that it has to be maintained.
Okay.
I'm curious about the, I've seen too many times here around Rolla where a fence is required and they slap up a chintzy PVC that just falls apart. It does nothing to prevent, you know, people from coming through, they just knock it down, it falls over in the wind. You know, are we talking that or are we talking they're actually going to maintain an actual physical barrier to provide some relief to the concern?
Sure. Let me put it this way, we don't have like fence codes that specify how exactly you build a fence and whatnot. What I, I understand what it is that the, the intent is, and so that's part of when they turn in the landscape plan, part of my review, is making sure that what they are planning to do is what meets the intent of what we want them to do.
Let me rephrase this question, because I think I know where he's going, because I have the same opinion sometimes.
Yeah.
Forget that it's built, right? You approve it, it's built. Four years from now, the fence looks terrible. Does the city do anything to any property owner if a required fence is not kept in good condition, whatever good conditions?
We, we could.
No, that's, I'm not asking what we could, I'm asking what he's doing.
It doesn't come up terribly often, but when it does, the first thing we do is look to see if it is something that's required in the code and we'd send a letter and say it's, it's required to be there by, by the code. But it doesn't, it doesn't come up terribly often, but when, when people complain about it, then we certainly get on it.
Okay. Storm comes through, knocks half of it down.
Yeah.
What happens?
Well, if, if it's an area that we can see from the road, then we might, you know, we'd send them, send them a letter saying that it needs to be done. But a lot of the stuff is, you know, it's in the backs and sides and things like that. So if, then if the neighbor called and said, hey, this fence was put up, now I can see, you know, the parking lot, isn't that, wasn't that fence supposed to be there? Then, then we look that up and make sure it was supposed to be there and then follow the normal nuisance or zoning violation process, send them a letter, give them time to correct it.
So is there anything specifically in code that requires how the condition of the fence must be maintained?
The property maintenance code would say that, you know, if it's falling over, boards are missing, those sorts of things. As far as like painted, being painted to our likely likeness, how we would like, probably not. As far, there is some things in the code about what it's made of, so you couldn't go and, you can't just use like scrap, things like that.
Okay, now to your point on the code, go ahead.
Well, so they have to have a fence. If at some point essentially they don't have a fence, or they only have half a fence, then it's a violation and we would revoke their conditional use permit, in which case they would have to shut down their church. It's a pretty dire penalty if we really wanted to enforce it.
Okay. I'm not at all suggesting that's what's going to happen on this property, but I agree with your point here, but you can go around town and find a number of cases where fences are pretty lousy.
I think that's part of Tom's point is, we don't have any say other than a nuisance or dangerous situation between private property owners. In this case, when it's a condition, it kind of goes to the question Nathan was adding, we do, because the conditional use specifies it's got to be there. That gives us a little bit more active interest than if it's a fence between two private parties.
David, you okay with the answer?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions for Tom? Final reading, please.
An ordinance to authorize the issuance of a conditional use permit for property generally located at the southeast corner of Forum Drive and 18th Street for a church on a lot greater than one acre in the R1 suburban residential district.
Turbin will make a motion to approve with the conditions mentioned. Jackson will second. Motion made in second, any further discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Dickens?
No.
Roloff's?
No.
Shelby?
Yes.
Grevin?
Yes.
McNevan?
Yes.
Barrent?
Yes.
Bulch?
Yes.
Han?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Turbin?
Yes.
Pace?
Yes.
Nine eyes.
Ordinance is approved. Next item is an ordinance to amend chapter 42 regarding signs.
All right. So I think Don talked about this to great length in the last meeting, there was, y'all talked about it, and there were some changes that was requested, the ordinance. We think that we've made all those changes, so I'll try to highlight those changes. Basically, on the proposed text in the residential districts, we took out that reference to undeveloped so that the signs would just apply to, this new stuff would just apply to any of the larger lots that are, you know, five acres or more. And so, and then also changed the how many, how it's calculated as to how many you can have. So what I came up with was first you can have up to 32 square feet per frontage, so that means you got street frontage, you can have 32 square feet. That's kind of one thing that was kind of lacking was it wasn't clear that if you had 79 feet of frontage, could you have a sign or not? So this clarifies, first of all, you can have 32 square feet. And then the, if you have more than 80 square feet, you get another 32 square feet. And then you get another 32 square feet for each additional 80 feet after that. What that change essentially does is for a smaller piece of property with less frontage, it kind of increases amount of signage you can have on the larger ones that we're talking about. I'll get to that slide. It turns out that it didn't really have much of an impact at all, just because of the 80 feet out of hundreds of feet didn't really make much difference. But anyway, that's what we kind of came up with. And basically reflected that kind of in the commercial area as well. I think we also took out, that's right, in the, in the residential area, took out the reference to on, off-premise, and on the undeveloped piece of property also the off-premise, because if it's undeveloped, then, you know, pretty much everything's off-premise because there's nothing on premises. So it's just these, all these signs are allowed. And then, as I said, I did the math again for these larger pieces of property. I think I came up with the same numbers within one of what was allowed before, so it's, it's pretty much the same as, as what would have been allowed before on the big pieces of property we're using as examples. So then just to summarize, we were needing to make some changes to clarify what, what you can and can't do, especially when it comes to these temporary signs, and then especially, I mean, it really is being talked about because of the political season. And we're hoping that this creates a little bit more fairness in how these are regulated when it comes to the undeveloped pieces of property, these larger pieces of property. Planning and zoning did recommend approval. All right, do you have any questions for me?
Any questions for Tom? In Tom in the packet, the red version is just the red line in the first two pages of the ordinance, it's the actual ordinance that will incorporate those changes.
Yes, yes, the ordinance has been revised and the text, the, the, strike through and underline, this is also revised, but.
Yeah.
Yep. I think I took care of the typos.
Any questions for Tom? If not, final reading, please.
An ordinance amending chapter 42, planning and zoning, article three, general provisions, section 42 dash 344, signage regulations for residential zoning districts, section 42 dash 345, sign regulations for non-residential zoning districts, and section 42 dash 346, temporary and portable signs.
Jackson will make a motion to approve?
Turbin will second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I have a, just a brief comment about the ordinance as proposed. I think it's odd that we would put forward an ordinance that gives a greater, a greater right or greater access to speech, which is what we're talking about here. That a, just because I own a larger property, I have a greater volume to speak. So if I have, if I happen to own a property that has 100 linear feet or 111 linear feet, actually what my property is, then because I'm in an occupied residential area, I get one 32-foot sign. But if I were on a much larger lot that had a lot more street frontage, I would have greater opportunity for speech. And I just think that it's, and even phrasing it so that it's for undeveloped property. So undeveloped property has a greater right to speech than developed property does. And to me, the, the premise is just backwards on its head. And I, I just, I think that if we're, if we're going to be regulating speech, that it should be as even-handed and as light as possible, and I think the current ordinance as is, does that, in that every R1 has the same right to speech as every other R1, and that we're not, we're not saying that, that the guy with bigger land or more money or whatever has a greater right to speech than anyone else does. And so just personally, those are, those are my views. I will be voting against this for that reason. So take it for what you will.
Any further discussion? Did we have the reading?
Yes.
Roll call vote?
Grevin?
Yes.
McNevan?
No.
Barrent?
No.
Jackson?
Yes.
Turbin?
Yes.
Pace?
No.
Dickens?
No.
Roloff's?
No.
Shelby?
Yes.
Bulch?
Yes.
Han?
No.
Five eyes.
Would the ordinance fail, fail, fall, failing? Is there any, has a comment, wants staff to do anything different or just move on?
So I'm going to speak a little bit to Williams' logic, and I understand where he's coming from, but to me, that's like saying, I have a $1 bill and Tom has a $5 bill, but Tom shouldn't be allowed to buy more with that $5 bill than what I have with that $1 bill. It's, it makes no sense at all.
Well, in the public, in the public sphere, like if I was to go buy ad space, for instance, right? So if I was to go to the newspaper and want to buy an ad, you know, my $1 only buys so much ad space in the paper, but that's a private exchange. Here, it's the, it's the government establishing the rules for speech. And I think if the government is establishing the rules for speech, it should be even, not, not that the government sets that one set of landowners has a greater, greater access to speech than another set of landowners.
But, but it is even by linear foot. It is exactly even by linear foot.
But then a residential, residential property, or pardon me, occupied property has a lesser access to speech based on their property size. So if I have 4.9 acres, I'm limited in my speech versus somebody who owns 5.1 acres.
So then it's on you to go out and find other people that have other linear foot that you can put that sign on. If you're running for, if you're going to post something on, up there.
And, and I'm, I'm not even speaking about campaigning necessarily. I'm just generally, broadly, you know, I, I just, it just rubs me the wrong way.
I respect that. It doesn't make sense to me, but, but.
Well, I'd say the entire concept of limiting signage at all only has to do with the level of clutter and distraction that occurs. So to me, it only makes sense to base it off of how much space the property has, because that's going to base how much can be taken up over a given area. And so, I mean, you, you could make the argument that no limit should ever be incurred, but And so, I mean, you could make the argument that no limit should ever be occurred, but there's a, most of the arguments from a governmental standpoint is for safety, because there's so much clutter and so much signage, so then it's like, okay, it doesn't matter that I own 50 acres, I can put one sign there, or if I own a quarter of a lot, I can put one sign there, even though the whole argument of limitation is actually based off of the clutter of how much signage is there. So to me, it makes sense to base it off of that footage. I can appreciate Han's concept, because anytime you step in the realm of limitation of a freedom, we have to be very cautious, but the entire concept of us limiting this at all is only based off of the concept of safety and how much signage can go somewhere.
In that case, then, if, if the standard were the same for all properties, so if on the one hand for occupied properties, it's one sign for, you know, you get 32 square feet.
Right.
And then, on the other side, you get it every 80 linear feet of curb. If you're going to have a formula, have a formula, if you're going to set a standard for the type of lot, set a standard for the type of lot, I just, the mixing and matching, I just, it doesn't sit well.
I'll offer a perspective, not as a mayor, but as a citizen, so I'm addressing it to my council persons. I'm not sure why this started, I think it was an outgrowth of some issue on a political sign. But I think if you ask the average guy on the street, and say, do you want bigger political signs, do you want more political signs, you're going to probably give an answer of no. And frankly speaking, during campaign season, when I drive down a road, I'm not an idiot, I see a sign that says "Vote for me," and when I see 10 more right behind it, like I'm really stupid, if anything, I'm not going to vote for you, because you don't need to put it so much in my face. So, to your point, Nathan, I think we're making more clutter, might not appear that way, because they're bigger lots, I get it. The other thing is, let's not remember, we cannot regulate content. So, a big 32-feet sign that says abortion is great, free Palestine, Trump, Harrah Harris, I mean, we're going to have to live with those consequences. So, as a citizen, I would tell you, I'm not so sure what this is really doing, for what that's worth.
If I could just add, the reason it really surfaced is that the last two years in November, council ended up granting a moratorium on any sign enforcement because of this ordinance, so that was really the idea of, on these large lots, where they were putting up well more than 32 square footage of signs, councils ended up saying, don't enforce your ordinance. And so we just, two years in a row, granted moratoriums on an enforcement mechanism. So that's what brought the issue up, then, okay, if we're going to go do that exercise every year, then let's look at changing the rule. But if council's comfortable with the existing rule, we need to, next year, come November, say, you're limited to 32 square feet regardless of the size of your lot in residential area, and that's what the council's action tonight is doing, so.
And just for clarity, Han, is it because, you're comparing R1 to R1, saying that there's different, whether it's occupied versus non-occupied is where you're finding the issue? Like, my mind goes to like, different commercial zones, how big the sign is, like, the zone determines that, how tall it can be, how big it can be, you don't have any problem with that. It's the fact that both are in an R1, but the fact that one's not occupied, like, non-developed, I think is the proper word, non-developed versus developed, is the fact that, that's where you see the issue to be, is that that's what's determining how much signage you can put there?
Yeah, so on one hand, a developed property is limited, whereas an undeveloped property is not. And so, the fact that you have, you have two different mechanisms for determining how much, how much is allowed on this type of zoned property is the issue. If we had one standard, one formula for all R1, period, okay, then that's, that's a standard. But because we're slicing and dicing within the R1, that's, and then, to me, it seems, it seems imbalanced.
So if it said something like, sorry, I interrupted you.
No, no.
I was going to say, if it said something like, every 80 linear feet of R1 frontage, you can, you could put a sign that's equivalent to 32 square feet?
Or, you know, yeah, 32 square feet per 80.
Per 80.
So you just, you do the math, you figure out, okay, I've got 100, if I have 120, then I get 150% of the total signage, so 32, so I can have 48 square feet of signage on my property. If, I would, I would prefer that direction versus, if we were going to have an ordinance that was formula-based, I prefer an ordinance that is, as it is currently, which is just that, if it's an R1 district, you're going to have 32 square feet, end of story, moving on.
Okay.
Because then, you know, for code enforcement, you don't have to get out the measuring wheel and see, well, oh, they only have 111 square, they only have 111 feet of curb, so their sign can only be, you know, 45 square feet, not 48 square feet, you know. You want to avoid like, the ticky tackiness of, you know.
Moving on, we have no business, no, no new business scheduled for tonight, we have one item under fiscal transaction, and that's a motion to award a bid and consider a first reading for an electrical bid.
So staff open bids, project 517, Pine Street lighting. This project will install streetlights on Pine Street from 12th to 18th Street, be the same poles and fixtures we have on King's Highway, look exactly the same. Low bidder was Meyer Electric out of Jefferson City for $179,826, so tonight staff's recommending awarding the bid to the low bidder, and first reading of the ordinance authorizing the merit in contract with Meyer Electric for $179,826.
So Darren, these are the same poles and fixtures as King's Highway, right?
Yes.
So early on in these discussions, there was discussion about the distance between the poles and the university, I don't know if the sororities or fraternities, whatever, from a safety perspective, asked that they were put a little closer out there. Are we putting them closer than now, or closer than normal?
No, sir.
So did that, did that point come up in recent discussions?
Yeah, I mean, with the conversations with the university, they definitely understood that.
Right.
What this didn't do is it didn't do pedestrian lighting on the west side of Pine Street.
Yeah, this is, so this is street lighting, this is not pedestrian lighting. If we were going to do pedestrian lighting, it would be on the other side of the road. We haven't, we don't have any right of way on that side of the road to do pedestrian lighting.
What is the difference between pedestrian lighting and street lighting?
Height.
Different, different height?
Different height, and so, so if you'll go to Tim Bradley Way, for example, you know, the streetlights are right up next to the road, the pedestrian lights that are behind the sidewalk and are much shorter.
Okay, I got it, thank you.
I think also worth mentioning, Darren, that this is funded by the TDD.
Correct.
This is a $1.5 million project towards the overall Pine Street project, a component of it is the lighting, this bid is higher than what was budgeted, but it's still TDD funds covering it, because we've underspent in some of the other categories of that project. So, just in case council had some questions about the Pine Street project itself.
Yeah, the Pine Street project overall is coming in a little under budget, so.
Any other questions for Darren?
Ms. Lawson Sowers was here last week, I was able to watch in, and I know that they kind of deal with the downtown business, of course. Is it, is there conversations with, because I know that they're talking like fountain and development and stuff for the downtown area, do they weigh in on anything like this? Or are we, like, I don't know if she said it on those meetings, or if they had input into this as well?
She didn't, she didn't have a lot of strong feelings, I mean, you know, in her mind, the downtown starts at 12th Street, goes 12th to 6th, so, you know, having a little taller lights, more of a, you know, King's Highway feel to, was fine, yes.
Just curious.
There's been a lot of desire to have more lighting south of 12th.
Right.
Down to 6th Street, and that'll be taken up at a future day when we do some downtown planning. I think this, this meets everyone's vision, I think, for that, for the northern stretch, other than the pedestrian lighting that will end up hopefully working out with the university at some point down the road.
Any, any other questions?
Just, how much more is there to be done in this project, and beyond the lighting? Is the lighting the last piece of the overarching Pine Street project, or what else?
So then, the signage, you know, we did a, got a grant to help fund some of the design on that, so that that would be the last piece that the TD board had authorized with some signage.
Okay, I was just curious, thanks.
Is there a motion to award the bid to Meyer Electric?
I'll make that motion.
One second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? First reading, please.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a certain agreement between the city of Ralla, Missouri and Meyer Electric Company, Inc.
Moving on to citizen communication, is there any citizens that would like to speak to city council? David, I'm going to ask one more time. All right. Mayor or city council comments?
I just want to bring up or remind everybody, Summerfest is this weekend, so Nathan had just brought up Law &amp; RDBA, they, this is a huge event for them, this is something, one of their biggest events of the year, definitely, and they've got a great slate for Friday night and Saturday night out there with a lot of, a lot of great things. If you go to their Facebook page, you can check it all out, but it's a full day on both days, and it sounds like they talked me into being in the dunk tank out there Saturday and Sunday, so, anybody.
Dunk tank. Oh, it's brutal. Bring a pillow.
Yeah, yeah, so.
I'm telling you, it's hard on your back.
I did it last year, and I hit the water a lot, so, anyway, happy to help them out, happy to support the office club, and everything else with Summerfest down there.
My dear mother-in-law spent a paycheck trying to put me in the water. Never forget that. Comments for the good of the order? Few poll points, the next meeting is Monday, the 19th.
Nathan, sir, editor, he catches that stuff, thanks for doing that.
16.
Yeah.
Okay. Event reminder, electronics, appliances, tire recycling collection is June 14th.
Does it brewer signs?
It's a brewer signs, yeah. Pride event, junior, June 14th, from 5 to 8. Darren, you want to talk about this?
So as the mayor said, June 14th, by date, be the Pride, 2025 Pride event, the north and south festival lots will be closed for that event, as will Oak Street from 9th to Elm, in your packet was a flyer, and a map showing where the event will be taking place.
Any questions for Darren? Jonathan might, oh, I didn't see Jonathan.
Mr. Mayor, may I speak about it?
Yes, please.
So I'm Jonathan Kimball, and I live at 601 Southview. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight about an organization and an event that's dear to me. In 2020, I joined with a couple of other individuals to found LGBTQ+ Ralla, and I continue to serve as its secretary treasurer. In 2021, we had our first Pride celebration at Zuman Park, and in 2023, we moved Pride to the Bandshell and festival lots. We've settled on the second Saturday in June each year, so that we avoid Summerfest, as well as Juneteenth and Pride events that are held in other cities. This is a free, all ages event, though of course parental discretion is suggested as for all public events. So what is Pride? Above all, it's a time when people of all sexual orientations and gender identities can be their true selves in public with no shame. Pride is welcoming to anyone who can accept the full diversity of the LGBTQ+ community, and I'm pleased that as a straight cisgender man, I'm just as welcome as anyone else. This year, Pride will be June 14th, from 5 to 8 p.m., we'll have food trucks in the lot next to the Bandshell, we'll have community booths in the northeast lot, the one that has the shade structure, along with crafts, face painting, and giveaways. We always have lots of pins, and stickers, and flags and such, so that people can celebrate their identity and show solidarity with the community. From about 5:30 to 6:30 at the Bandshell, we have Michelle Boyd leading zumba and line dancing. Then just before 7, the community and craft booths will shut down so that everyone can go to the evening's entertainment at the Bandshell, and once again, our own Roxana Rexia will be the master of ceremonies, and we have four other drag performers. I'm excited for another successful Pride celebration. We've quickly grown from about 80 attendees in 2021 to over 500 attendees every year, and I'd like to personally invite everyone on city council to come join us and see the pure joy that comes with affirming, supportive, and visible community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
While we have you here, Dr. Kimball, I'd just like to ask, I heard a rumor circulating that your organization might be opening up a permanent space somewhere in town, is that correct?
Yeah, and I had hoped that I'd be able to make some more formal announcement about that tonight, we're not, not quite there yet, we have a space, we're getting it ready to open. I, I'm, I'm hoping that we can open it during Pride Month.
Two questions, kind of with this, this kind of goes with Summerfest or with this event here, how's it determine whether there's a police presence at things? I know that some of these have had those, is it based off of the expected turnout, or how's that determined whether there's going to be a police presence at an event?
Yeah, it's usually, one, if there's liquor, for sure there is.
Okay.
We require that. Then beyond that, it's really up to the chief as to whether or not they think there's a safety issue.
Okay.
And a couple of occasions I can think of, it wasn't because of the event, we were always concerned about a counter protest, so this could have been, this, not just the June, the Pride event, but there was other events that we had a few years ago, Black Lives Matter had an event, we were more concerned about counter protesters, and so, then the police department will have a presence there.
Okay.
Chief, is that, I'm sorry, John.
I'll mention that we have a meeting with, you know, Darren, and with many, you know, people who represent all the various city offices, we had that, what, about a month ago, I think, and, and discussed what our needs were regarding a police presence and other, other services.
Want a comment from chief or no?
No.
Okay, thank you, Jonathan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One thing to note, FEMA has an information booth at Summerfest, I guess just Saturday or Friday on Saturday?
I think Saturday.
Let me just, I guess this is for more people watching, yeah, FEMA will have a booth set up at Summerfest on Saturday, June 7th. It's there for informational purposes and to answer any questions people may have about the, the process to seek funds. Any other comments for the good of the order?
Mayor, just on that line, we have been getting lots of information from FEMA and Small Business Association Administration, lots of others, so we have been repopulating all the resilient Ralla websites, so we really want to continue to drive people to that, we kind of lost some momentum post-recovery, but now that we're into the next phase of federal assistance, that's a great resource. We're trying to, anything that you see out there that you think might be of help, send it on to us, Lori puts it on Facebook, social media, and then we share that on the resilient Ralla website as well.
I was just going to say, it looks great, I went out there and looked at it, in the last two months, there's like eight or 10 new updates that you guys have stuck out there, so you're doing a great job of keeping the new stuff out there.
One place where people know to get information.
Yep.
Have we had any problems with, I don't know how to say this, fly-by-night folks coming into town ripping people off?
Not that I've heard of, yeah, chief is shaking his head no.
No?
No.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments for the good of the order? If not, is there a motion to go into closed session per revised Missouri statutes 610?
Jackson make a motion.
I'll make that, I'll second that.
Roll call vote?
Han?
Yes.
McNeven?
Yes.
Bulge?
Yes.
Shelby?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Barrett?
Yes.
Pace?
Yes.
Dickens?
Yes.